Okay, councillors, please stand. Swan Hills County Council acknowledges the treason of custodians of the land on which we make and appies its respects to their elders, past, present. Our council can feel the credit. And, Mr Mayor, we beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill. Bless the Lord, Jesus. Apologies, ladies and medicines. Yes, apology from councillor Chris Jeffrey. The apologies are done. All the way that apology has been accepted, please. Kamu, councillor, please second councillor King, who was in favour, carried. Director's office is present, Mr Liskin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Joel Liskin is here as acting chief executive officer and director of property services, along with directors Petkovic, Green and Myers.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes. I have the move of employees, the scheduled meeting of council held on the 21st of September 2021 will be confirmed, please. Councillor Benham, second of councillor McPhee, all those in favour, carried. I'll disclose the conflict of interest. Do you have any conflicts of interest today? Do you not? Joint letters and reading of petitions? Do we have any, Mr Liskin?
No, we do not today.
Do we have any public questions?
No, we do not today.
We don't have anybody for open forum. I would ask that if I have a move that we suspend standing orders briefly, or the notice of passing, Mr Jack Butler, please. Yes, councillor Benham, second of councillor King, all those in favour, carried. Swan Hill City Council would like to acknowledge the passing of Mr John, who was known as Jack Henry Butler, former councillor for the Swan Hills Shire from 1975 to 1978. He passed away on the 21st of September 2021, aged 96 years. Would like to pass on our consolences to Jack's extended family. We're adjourned standing orders. Yes, councillor Benham, second councillor King, all those in favour, carried. Section B reports. I have a V 21.87. Use and development of group accommodation in the farming zone located at number 45 Chapman Lane, Tresco. Mr Green, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is an application for worker accommodation in Tresco and we're all very aware of the need for worker accommodation to serve our agricultural industry. And in fact, both federal and state governments have been providing funding and help to allow that to occur both within towns and also on farms. Over the last six to 12 months, council has approved about eight on farm accommodation complexes, either as permits or certificates of compliance. And certificates of compliance is a document we provide property owners that indicate the conditions under which they can have worker accommodation on their farms without the requirement for a planning permit. So it's as of right. So there is a lot happening on farms and lots of accommodation has been provided. And the main aims of that accommodation on farms is around helping obviously the farms and the farmers to be able to operate their farms efficiently. But it's also about quality and safe accommodation for workers. Council is very keen to avoid overcrowding of accommodation, ensure buildings are safe from fires and the light, to ensure that wastewater is disposed of appropriately, to ensure that there's recreation facilities, even if it's bare minimums and shade areas and perhaps a barbecue, outdoor cooking facilities, ablution facilities, and to ensure that this accommodation is not right next door to a semi-agricultural industrial use, which could be a packing ship that might operate long hours with lights and trucks coming and going. There is a new planning scheme amendment that has just been presented by the state government just last week, so since the writing of this report, which does tie worker accommodation to 40 hectare or greater sites, must be tied to the agricultural component of where the accommodation is located, to a maximum of 10 people. And that will become, as of right, we won't need a planning permit. So anything, if it's on a lot less than 40 hectares, if it's more than 10 people, it will require planning permits. We're still investigating exactly how that will work and we'll look to council on that at a later date. Just that's a little bit of background, I guess, in relation to dealing with this application. So this application is for four dwellings of three bedrooms each, so 12 bedrooms on a site, just over 2,000 square metres, which also has some sheds on it. So it's probably about 2,000 square metres for the four dwellings, or about 480 to 500 square metres per dwelling, which is fairly small lot to compare it to a house block in town. It's unclear whether that's for 12 people, 24 people, or perhaps even 36 people living in those houses, that one or two or three people per bedroom. The applicant was requested when a pre-application meeting was held with council offices to consolidate it with adjoining farmland, to tie it to the agriculture, and was also requested to provide an LCA, which is a land capability assessment to ensure that the site could accommodate the waste water generated by the residents of those houses. The applicant did not do either of those things and asked that the application be dealt with based on the information provided. The report is fairly comprehensive, so I don't intend to go through all of that. But my concern, as I've mentioned before, is what we're trying to achieve with on farm accommodation, it's to have safe accommodation for workers, it's to tie it to agriculture so that it is used for agricultural purposes. This location is probably close enough to Swan Hill, where it could be used by other workers, manufacturing workers, which is, we want those people to be living in town. Group accommodation does require things to be self-contained, which these four dwellings are, so they each have their own kitchen, laundry and living space. There are three recommendations listed as being possibilities. Officers have recommended and do recommend to council that we issue a notice of refusal to grant a permit for the use and development of the group accommodation because of its inconsistency with the planning scheme, particularly in relation to wastewater and its ability to be tied to the agriculture for which it's serving, which is the refusal of the applicant to consolidate it with properties in a vicinity that are in the same or similar ownership. So that is our recommendation, councillors.
Thank you. Questions, councillors?
Can you just refresh my memory, Miss Green? This land in the middle of Tresco, in the middle of a farm block, was there a dwelling on this previously?
There was. So it was a household excision some 30 years ago.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, that household excision, well, the current owner is in, owned by anything, do you know?
I don't know.
And the applicant, the current owner of that land, B, there's several other part land for the owns in the area?
Yes, or family or superannuation.
So each family may own one title here and there, and this block is actually owned by the super fund?
No, this block's not owned by the super fund. Adjoning properties are owned by the super fund.
So this block is not owned by the super fund?
No, it's my understanding.
Further questions, councillors?
If there's no more questions, Mr Mayor, I'll move a motion as per option two, that council grants a permit for the use and development of group accommodation in the farming zone at number 45 Chapman Lane, Tresco, subject to conditions.
Another second of that.
Second of that, second by councillor Young. Let's just go to the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Tresco's an interesting place and given that it is in the middle of Tresco, surrounded by, like councillor McPhee said, other pieces of land with titles within the same family, it's by default tied to agriculture and the agriculture activities out there. We're not talking about something that could be classed as a rural lifestyle block on the lake without taking offence to the residents of Tresco. But we all know that on farm, or work accommodation for farm workers is a real issue and we face this every, just about every council meeting, I think. But it contradicts, some of the rules then contradict things like the seasonal workers programme and the labour hire authority. And I think the ability to have your own workers' accommodation then negates the need in some cases, and I don't know what the technicalities are with this, but having your own accommodation and allowing for that can negate the need for contractors because you can house your own workers on your property, cut out the middle man, which is ultimately what we like to see and stop that exploitation of farm workers and have them living somewhere safe and self-contained and somewhere that they can call their own. And given the applicant owns quite a bit of land, as Miss Green said, in Tresco, when we're talking about thinking generationally, I think we safely can say that with the amount of agricultural land owned in this part of the world, that it is a generational family farm and these things don't turn over very quickly or at all. So I've made no secret how I feel about helping out our agricultural sector and our farmers and the farm workers that work in that industry. So with that, I fully support this. Thank you.
Yes, I'd just love to say that this operation is basically a stone fruit operation and stone fruit is quite unique. It's different to grape growers in that they need harvest labour, pruning labour, thinning labour, and they need a whole lot of different individuals to spray and irrigation, slashing and all those other sorts of tasks. So you're looking at providing some accommodation for an area that has clearly demonstrated through COVID situation of the issues being suffered by the industry in the shortage of labour. But my other reasons also for support is that the building and the engineering area and the internal departments have no objection to this application, but also environmental have requested a land capability assessment, which is covered by the conditions covering attachment two, where option number two says it should be subject to the conditions. So to me, all those internal areas are actually supportive of this. And I totally disagree with the economic indication listed, that this is not a legitimate supporting area to agriculture, because there can be anything for a relevant connection to agriculture than the assistance of providing labour to the industry. The agricultural industry and the rural operation need this facility, so I suggest that we go there.
Thank you, councillor Young. Any further speakers for the motion? Are you against the motion?
I speak for all the motioners. I'd like to speak in support of us granting this permit with the conditions recommended. There is no doubt that we're in unique circumstances. The landscape around worker accommodation is changing. But more to the point, we've got a harvest and a great need for labour in our region during this up and coming season. And having that accommodation facilitated as soon as possible with the conditions will be a great benefit to that, the area of Tresco and that farming operation in general. So I think that it's the most thing that, we have to take each application on its merits. And looking at this application, I think the benefits far outweigh the potential negatives.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Who wants to speak? First to, if against the motion, councillor Young, my two.
Yes, speaking against the motion, Mr Mayor. Look, there's no argument. We do need accommodation in the area, in our agricultural area. But we've got to do the accommodation in the appropriate and the best possible way. This land isn't connected to any agricultural land. Councillor Benham said by default it's connected to the land. Well, the rest of the land is owned by a super fund. What happens when that super fund wants to cash itself in? Then that land is owned by someone else to be, another, um, doesn't, other people. The close proximity to Swan Hill, as Miss Green said, that could be used for anyone to live on those premises if they were to be built. And I don't think it's appropriate to build them because you're talking such a small part of the land. You're talking about looking after our workers and our environment. Well, the workers themselves, they've got no amenity at the place. You can't step out the front door without stepping into your neighbour's place. You've got no common area. You've got four car parks. The land is not big enough for a start for four houses landline. They shouldn't be built there. There's a proper way to go about this, and that is connecting it to another block of land, which was given to the applicant. They chose not to do that. Who's to know? Those applicants may have even been the owner that had initially incited the house. They've let this bacon, or I think it was 2011, the house burned down, somewhere around that stage. So you're talking 10 years, it's when you're sitting there baking. It's not the appropriate way to go. The amenities of the area. It's not the appropriate way to go, the amenities of the area, we've got to look after our workers, and the fact is that, the other thing is that councillor Young mentioned there's no objection from the other departments. You can't take that into consideration. The other departments are looking at purely an engineering perspective, not a planning perspective. Just because there's no objection doesn't mean they're supportive of it. That wasn't the question asked of those departments. Those departments specifically look at it from an engineering perspective alone. And you're sure with the environmental part, that wanted this land assessment capability done, would have asked the applicant to do that before, he chose not to do it. We shouldn't be putting that in a condition. If that doesn't come up to speed, this can't happen. We should be asking for that in the first instance, not going down the line and putting it as a condition in a planning application, basically making the planning application far. We didn't give the information upfront where we should be doing it. I think it's inappropriate, we've got to be very careful how we set precedence here, councillors. I'm not against providing accommodation in the agricultural sector, we've got to do it in the right place and in the right manner.
Any further speakers against the motion? For the motion?
No, against the motion. Yeah, for all, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, really for all the reasons that councillor McPhee has pointed out, this package of land can be tied to a surrounding title quite easily, to make up the necessary land area for it to be genuine farm workers' accommodation. The land capability assessment could have been provided, hasn't been provided, and like councillor McPhee said, I don't see the point in granting a permit only to potentially take the permit away if the land capability assessment doesn't come up scratch. And, yeah, with the proposed plan shown, there is a definite lack of worker amenity at this, at this site. Absolutely support farm worker accommodation if it's done in the appropriate way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against, um, Mr. Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really quickly, each house block, I think Miss Green said was over four hundred square metres, just over four hundred square metres. Council's about to build eight townhouses on four hundred square metres. So say that there's no room, I think it contradicts about what we're about to do in Robinvale. So there is, there is room, and it might breathe a little bit of life back into Tresco. Tresco is, has suffered, it used to be a thriving township, a great little township, and it's really taken a hit, you know, after many years of drought and the water market and all that other stuff, there's been a lot of people walk off their farms. If we've got a chance here to plan for the future and breathe some life back into agriculture in Tresco and give it some life, then I think we absolutely should do that for the future of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Benham. Now, there have been no further speakers, we now go to the vote. All those in favour? Those against? Motion is carried. Heighten B, twenty-one point eight eight, local law, Swan Hill Regional Livestock Exchange. Miss Petcover, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The local law is coming back to council now with the recommendation for it to be declared as a local law and to follow the process outlined in the Local Government Act to declare it as a local law. It went for community consultation following the council meeting in August. We did receive four submissions, and they outlined in the section of communication in this report. The only submission that said it's not in support of the declaration of local law suggested that we may do well with the code of conduct instead. The other ones were in support, and there were some recommendations for tidying up of some numbering and some wording, and that has been included in the version that's in front of you. We did not receive any submissions from the agents, they did flag that they want to have a conversation with us, well past the timeframes for the community engagement, which is not really a problem. However, following the sale, when they wanted to meet with us, they decided that there is no need, and the meeting never happened. So we have received nothing back from the agents, the transporters or anyone else as an identified body. The local law is very similar to the local laws governing other areas in our region, and it really ties up legislative requirements, just code of conduct, and general roles and responsibilities of everyone cooperating from the Salyard.
Thank you, Miss Petcover. Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillor Benham?
Miss Petcover, so in the report we talk about the agent agreements and that they weren't executed. What's the difference between an agent's agreement and a code of conduct, and why would they sign a code of conduct if they won't sign an agreement?
Oh, they wouldn't, um, no, not true, Mr. Mayor. The agent agreements are normally, even Bendigo that has a local law, has an agent agreement attached to the local law, and that's what we are proposing here too. So the agreement is an annual agreement, and every year it recommits both parties to that engagement and the way the relationship will work. It certainly is much, it doesn't have the depth of the local law, and it doesn't have the penalties associated, the possible penalties associated with the local law. We've tried to go along the part of just having agent agreements, and that didn't get us much further than just having the conversations and retaining the agreements. A code of conduct would only look at behavioural issues rather than compliance and regulation.
Thank you.
Yes, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Miss Petcover, the agents involved in our livestock exchange, they're obviously working in the other areas that there are local laws involved in, they have no issues working in those places?
They have no issues working in those places.
Um, Miss Petcover, to be quite clear, the agents were given every opportunity to contribute to this in a number of forums and have chosen not to, is that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, councillor McPhee?
I'll move the recommendation, yes?
Yep. Move both those, put the recommendation. Thank you, councillor McPhee, seconded councillor Benham. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, look, the Salyards are owned by council, so we've got an obligation to ensure that it's a safe workplace. I think by implementing this local law, it gives us a bit more power to make sure that those, that obligation is met, and we have some teeth behind the local law, whereas codes of conduct and policies don't always have those teeth involved. The fact that you look at the four submissions we supported, there was only one that didn't support it, the others basically supported the whole idea. I think this is just a step forward to make sure that it's a safe workplace, and not only for the council employees, for the agents yourselves, and any other employee or any other person on those facilities. It's about making it safe for everyone, this is the appropriate way to go. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Councillor Benham, do you speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just really quickly, from a risk point of view, I'm surprised we haven't had this in place before, so we do have an obligation to provide a safe workplace, but I think this is a really positive, a really positive step forward to make sure that we are maintaining safe work practices at Salyard. Thank you.
Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? And therefore do you wish to close the debate, councillor McPhee? Therefore we'll go to the vote, all those in favour, asked unanimously. Heighten B, twenty-one point eight nine, road deviation and land exchange, Makero Road, Swan Hill. Miss Petcover again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is quite an ordinary and procedural exchange of roads. There's a road reserve at present off Corinne Street, and the proposed subdivision is proposing it to shift within the same subdivision to a different location. The road hasn't been formed, and all the easements will carry on to the new road. So it's quite a procedural, it's part of the subdivision.
Thank you, Miss Petcover, yes.
I do have, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. The road now that is unmade, Makero Road, all happened to the name Makero Roads, and it's quite locally significant.
Thank you for the question, true, Mr. Mayor. The road name is, currently it's proposed with a different naming in the subdivision, but that will have to follow our naming, asset naming policy, so it will have to go for consultation. So the fact that the developer has proposed the name on their plane and the plane has been endorsed doesn't mean that that name will be the one for the road when the road gets declared.
So just to follow on with that, if the new name by the developer does get adopted, will then the name Makero Road go back into the asset management register to be used elsewhere, should it come up?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Miss Petcover, the land to the west of the current Makero Road, will any of those titles there become landlocked?
Not to the best of my knowledge, Mr. Mayor. That has been true planning, and that has been looked at as a condition for the planning.
Further questions, councillors? There being none, would you, do I have a mover, please? Councillor Benham, councillor Young, seconded. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, per se.
Yep. Are there those speakers against? Okay, we're going to vote, all those in favour, asked unanimously. Heighten B, twenty-one point nine zero, service performance report including local government performance reporting framework indicators, Mr. Lesci, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a requirement under the service performance principles of the Local Government Act that we set quality and cost standards for council services, and we report upon these annually. The report here contains the actual performance for council services against these targets for the 2021 financial year. Their council currently reports on 138 cost and quality standards across 10 service groups. There's a detailed report attached to this, but there's a summary report in there that highlights the actual results achieved and explanations for the variations or where they have not been achieved. The purpose of this report is for council to adopt these service performance reports presented and adjust the 2022, 2021, 2022 financial targets as indicated in the report. I'm happy to take questions, or hello, I'm happy to take questions, and then you may have.
Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number forty-eight, you've got the achieved, not achieved, not achieved. You've got done forty-nine percent is, hasn't been achieved in 2021, but you've got fifty-four percent last year that was not achieved. When it's saying not achieved, does that mean it's, like, it could have only missed out by just a slight amount, but we almost there's top of it? It just seems a high percentage, is that the case?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's right, councillor McPhee. We mark everything as not achieved if it hasn't exactly met the target, so it may only be a number of cents or a number of indicators below the target. If it's below the target, it's marked not achieved.
And just to follow on from that, the second table in relation to that, within the range accepted, this year we're going down marginally, albeit two and a half percent, we've still got ninety percent of them that are within the range, we dropped a couple percent anyway.
Again, these are the targets within the, these are the local government performance reporting framework. The targets within these are very, it may be that last year, for example, we didn't have any cases that went to VK, whereas this year we did, so the targets do, so the actual indicators do change. The variations in percentage, they do change from year to year. The ranges are often quite broad within the local government performance reporting, but if you read the detail within the report, that's probably a generalised response, but there is information further in the report.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillors? Okay, I have a mover, please.
I have a further recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Any further speakers, do I have a second up? Councillor King, wish to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, look, this is a very detailed report, and as a question I asked earlier in relation to not achieving and things, we're only missing out slightly. I think it's a good indication of where council's tracking, how we're going, and I think we are in a very good position, and it's all because of the staff and the work that they do in relation to this area, so I think this is a penalty after all staff, that we are so close and perform so well across our organisation. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor McPhee, councillor King, do you wish to speak? Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Do you wish to close, councillor McPhee? And if we go for a vote, all those in favour, asked unanimously. Heighten B, twenty-one point nine one, quarterly review of financial performance and financial position to the 30th of September 2021.
Mr. Lesci, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is council's performance against the budget for income expenditure for the three months to September 2021. Currently, we are predicting to still be favorable to budget with a number of significance, which we'll highlight in the report here. Some of that is underpayment of grants and additional grants coming in that we didn't have. There's employment costs where we have saved and recruitment goes for staff not being available or unable to fill positions currently. Work cover premiums for this year were significantly less than we had originally budgeted for. However, our work cover levy, the Mav scheme liability, our work cover scheme that we're in, that is closing, which I'm happy to take questions on later, has a liability of $924,000 for us this year. We have partially offset that because we had a stabilisation reserve for work cover because it is an up and down expense every year to offset some of that. And obviously, the ongoing impacts of Covid have affected our commercial leases, our leisure centre contributions, car parking, and increased cleaning costs due to the nature of Covid climate. So also based on that, we have pioneer settlements currently about $136,000 below forecast. However, that's due to current lockdowns and restrictions on patron numbers. At this stage, we, it is difficult to predict the full year result, as we saw last year. The January, February period was far busier than many previous years before that, so we won't have a fair indication on its final position until that point in time. So we would like council to note that the in particular financial year end result, based on the first quarter's operations, is a $12,433 positive variance to budget at this stage, but I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Lesci's already identified the question that's coming towards him in relation to the work cover levy, the MAV, obviously it's due to the MAV closing, and we were one of them in that, involved in that thing. Be unfavourable for $924,000. Could you just explain a little bit more about what that's about, Mr. Lesci? Thank you.
Yep, so our Mav work cover, it was a self-insurance scheme, and obviously that has been closed, and we have to revert back to WorkSafe and WorkSafe endorsed schemes. However, we have a number of liabilities that are outstanding, we also have a number of staff across the member councils that are already on workers' compensation claims, and they have ongoing financial obligations. Mav had covered those in their assessment, that they had sufficient money in the scheme to pay the future variations of those. However, upon the closure of Mav work care, WorkSafe have conducted their own actuarial review, and they believe the lifelong financial impact of current claims is more than what Mav had on its balance sheet, at which point, under the contract for the cessation of the scheme, is required to the member councils to contribute towards that lifetime cost, and that is what the invoices, our portion of the invoices for, for the $924,000. So that covers the lifelong cost of our current employees on there, that will again be reassessed at a three-year and six-year interval for its accuracy, so we might in the future have to pay more or less for that cost.
Yeah, just one more question, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, look, we're one of the 32 councils involved in this MAV scheme, that fee that we're paying is obviously very proportionate amongst all those councils. So they're all in the same boat.
That's correct, it's based on the number of claims that have come in over the life of the scheme, and the number of claims that are ongoing at the end of the scheme.
Do you, any further questions, councillors? Yes, councillor King?
Yeah, just on the pioneer settlement revenue, and I understand the lockdowns and restriction of patron numbers, is there any feel for what impact the Paragon Cafe now not being run by volunteers is going to have on our budget?
Well, we're unsure at this stage, Heather can probably give, well, we haven't really had much operation in full capacity to be able to know the full implications of that, but Heather can.
So we do know that we'll lose about between $70,000 and $100,000 a year in income from the volunteers, and it will actually cost us to run the cafe. So it'll be more, and we're bad for expressions of interest at the moment to get a tenant, so it will be more than $70,000 to $100,000 because of the lost income plus the cost to...
Cost to... Thank you.
Councillor Benham?
I just have a quick question on the car parking, the $36,000 unfavorable, is that just for the last quarter of what we should have taken or what was budgeted for that car parking meters?
It's what we're budgeted for, we also turned off our car parking meters for periods of time, which impacted on that.
That's what I mean, so that's impacted that.
Yeah, our decisions during the Covid.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? Yes, councillor?
I'm moving motion, as per the recognition, Mr. Mayor.
A second up, please. Councillor McKay, do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, look, with any budget, obviously budgets are fluid, and which it can be seen by our favourable and unfavourable items in this budget, but it's pleasing to see we are still in a $12,000 favorable location. Was mentioned there about the friend to the pioneer settlement, I think it's sad to see them closing, it's a... It is appropriate that we give them congratulations with what they've done and what money they've put into the settlement over the time. I think it's going to be a great loss to the settlement and come at a great cost to council into the future. The money that they did put in and we wish them all the best. They do a wonderful job. And I think we should actually make some sort of note of writing at a future time to thank them for their work. Thank you.
Councillor McPhee, councillor McKay, do you wish to speak to the motion?
I've got nothing to add.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? There being none, do you wish to close, councillor McPhee? No, no, right, go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item B twenty one point nine, oh, it's not, item B twenty one point nine two, hybrid council meetings.
Mr Lestrange, please. Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report proposes that council approve the attendance of staff at council meetings by virtual means where necessary. Under section three nine four of the Local Government Act, it provides for councillors to attend council to conduct council meetings through virtual technologies. We, as a council, have avowed ourselves to this opportunity previously on very limited number of occasions throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic and associated restrictions. Statements released by the Victorian State Government in recent days indicate the Chief Health Officers orders going forward when the victorious road made out of restrictions into the alignment of the national plan that it will not be possible for anyone to attend council meetings unless they are vaccinated once Victoria reaches eighty percent. The status indicated on current vaccination trends, this is likely to occur on or around the fifth of November. When the trigger is reached, a prohibition on attendance for unvaccinated people will apply to councillors, staff and public. In relation to attending work, there are currently for those who are not vaccine compliant, will be requirement that they work for home if they can. Council has taken legal advice in respect of this matter throughout Victoria and to best understand how to respond to this ever changing environment. Our legal advice today clarifies that that is a position in fact that an obligation for council to provide virtual attendance at council meetings in accordance with section three nine four of the Local Government Act. This will be necessary for all councillors of the municipality who are not vaccine compliant. Whilst section three nine four regards itself to the councillors, there is no mention and council officers are not required to meet that standard under the act. So a number of staff are required to assist in the operation of council meetings or present at council meetings that may be unable to do that and they do not meet the protections of three nine four for the terms of the act. Council needs to ensure that it conducts all of its affairs, including the conduct of council meetings in a COVID safe manner. Some of the, there may be some nervousness about the effectiveness of hybrid council meetings can be conducted. But in the current vaccine mandate climate, this is seen as the only way that we can ensure councillors and all staff necessary to conduct council meetings are able to participate in a COVID safe manner. Council will need to constantly monitor the developments in the vaccine mandate environment and respond to the changes as they are enacted. But now, however, it's suggested that council should support the attendance of council meetings by staff through virtual means. So we are asking the council approve attendance for council staff, council meetings and from council assemblies through virtual means where they are prevented from attending in person because of the vaccinated status or any other reason. And review this decision as necessary in the face of changing legislation and regulations and in particular, chief health officers' orders or other COVID restriction legislation that may be enacted.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Lestrange, there's a lot to unpack here.
There is.
When we say, when, just, when we say we're anticipated to fall in with the national plan, we being Victoria. Victoria seems to have gone a bit rogue at the moment. How sure can we be that we will fall in line with the national plan? Do they, does Victoria have to come into line when certain triggers are met? Or can other rules be put in place? How clear is it?
I can't answer that question because I'm not the Victorian government. However, we need, as part of this, is we need to be adaptable to whatever variances and nuances that do come out from state to state. And this will allow us the ability to be flexible in that process.
Good, great, thank you.
Yes, councillor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Another line in here, when the trigger is reached, the prohibition on attendance for unvaccinated people will apply to councillor staff and the public. Isn't that everyone that attends a council meeting?
That is correct.
And this is, this will cover everybody to be able to attend virtually, like they can do now.
Like they can watch us on screen now. We will obviously do a hybrid method and virtual methods. We will be live streaming all of this. So it'll be a mixture of in-house attendance and virtual attendance.
So it's council staff as well as council laws and all attending. Great. I just want to make it really clear.
And the public can attend as.
Right. And I just want to make it really clear so that, because this is a lot to unpack. I just want to make, make it really clear that it allows council staff, us as councillors and the public to attend.
Yeah, council laws are covered under section three nine four of the act. So current law is until a time in April twenty twenty two that virtual, that hybrid methods are enabled and allowable under the Local Government Act. That will be reviewed obviously before the expiration date.
Yes, McPhee.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. The recommendation doesn't mention anything about April twenty twenty two when the section three nine four of the Local Government Act will close at this point in time. What's the reasoning behind that?
We envisage there might be numerous circumstances that may come up from time to time that might be more suitable for staff to attend by virtual means. We have staff located throughout the municipality who may be required to attend or present a paper at council that might be time inefficient for them to drive to council and not from council. There might be people that we can't, we don't know that, we don't know how long the ongoing need to isolate once COVID positive results are found or they've been close contacts of. But this, this legislation might not cover that. But if we have staff in isolation who are capable of presenting and attending meetings, we want to make that available to them during that time.
What's the process now? Your staff don't attend or one of the directors aren't here. What happens now?
But they either, they can send a representative on their behalf if they're enacting or they don't attend. But they might not, not all staff here present papers every time they come to council.
Any further questions, councillors? Any further questions? Can I have a move, please? Yes, councillor Young, seconded councillor Bennett. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Young?
Yes, I think this is great opportunity. We've just been through probably a situation that's unprecedented and people not being able to go on holidays or do anything. So I think there's going to be a need for people to take a break at some point. And I think it's great that you'll be able to link in still with the meetings if you're away or whether you're here.
Councillor Young, councillor Bennett, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Really quickly, I agree with councillor Young. For someone that lives a hundred and forty Ks away, I think this is fantastic and it couldn't have come sooner. No, it's just a shame they took COVID for it to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion?
In addition to the case of unvaccinated people, there've been numerous occasions during the last eighteen months where, like, some of us have had to isolate due to being unwell or being tested. And so it would have been beneficial to be able to attend virtually and this situation still could come up. So it is perfectly relevant to a plethora of occasions and I support it.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Any further speakers for the motion? Against the motion?
I'm going to speak against the motion, Mr Mayor. A council meeting, the Local Government Act stipulates under three ninety four, it makes a reason for councillors not to attend. A council meeting is for councillors. The staff are here to assist us. What's happened in the past, if a staff member hasn't been able to get here, either the CEO or one of the other directors present their report. I think it's a very difficult situation. We've all been through Zoom meetings over this COVID period and there's difficulties with them. Part of a good governance, good meeting procedures, this council themselves have chosen to meet in person because the face to face meeting is a better meeting. You see, you see people's body language. You see more than what's just on a screen. I can see that there's danger in this as to where we go with the governing side of things. Remember councillors, it's a council meeting. The Local Government Act only talks about councillors and the CEO. It doesn't talk about staff. The staff don't need to be here. You should be all over the, over those issues now. We get reports. We have assemblies every week. There are, there are questions that do arise at the time, yes by all means, and we ask the staff that are here. They all should be able to their situation as well. That's what we paid the directors and the CEO good dollars for, is to be over the issues. Not to have other staff come along and need to present on their behalf. They should be doing it. They get paid good dollars for it. They should be able to give us the information. And I think it's about being, the good governance side of things is, an in-person meeting is a much better meeting than Zoom. The connectivity issues we have, what happens if we lose them halfway through? Do we just adjourn the matter and don't forget about that? We can't. We've got to deal with the issue there and then. There are some things that cannot be put off. And when it's face to face, you can deal with it there and then. If we lose what part of the council meeting through the Zoom process, every councillor wants to be able to hear everything and be able to see everything. Soon as that's not about, how do we know we've got to call them? We don't. There's just, there's too many issues with this. I think we've got to stay with. And looking at the Local Government Act twenty twenty stipulate, they've put an end date to it because they don't see it. If they wanted it to continue forever, they wouldn't put an end date to it. They would say this is great. But they themselves, the legislative makers, are saying putting an end date to this because it's not the best system. The best system is in person. Any suggestions?
Thank you. Councillor McPhee, any further speakers against the motion? Any further speakers for the motion?
Can I ask a question at this point in time?
Oh, you can. You can, councillor McKay.
So the, the legislation speaks about an end point for this, but our notice of motion doesn't.
Our notice of motion, this is for the staff component. So the legislation is for the councillor component. And currently, they're in consultation with the councils or some councils about their views on the virtual methods and their purposes for the future. I need, we need to see any outcome from that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Do you wish to close, councillor Young?
Oh, I would like, can I speak now, even though I wanted to add for the motion, but add further, is that possible? I, I agree with councillor McPhee to the extent that in-person meetings are far more effective, absolutely. But we are in a situation now where participants have been excluded, not because they're on holidays or for pure matters of convenience, but because of health orders essentially. So it's still important for people to be able to participate. I think this enables that, although it's not part of the, it's not part of the motion, I do want us to be conscious that there should be a thorough contemplation by council of the best way of governance and the best way of operating and the best way of conducting our meetings. Maybe on the other, that April seems to be a good date to be contemplating that. But I do support this motion as it stands now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. There being no further speakers, we'll now go to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Item B twenty one point nine three, presentation of annual report for the year ended further to June twenty twenty one. Mr Lestrange, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Council's annual report incorporating the financial performance statements and the ordered opinions was completed and delivered to the minister on the thirtieth of September twenty twenty one. This annual report is now presented for council's consideration and endorsement. It is followed the completion of the statutory requirements. Swan Hill City Council's annual report for the year end, thirty June twenty twenty one, is presented. All of council's financial accountability statements receive clear ordered opinions. Council remains in a good financial position, achieving accounting surplus of nineteen point one million dollars for the year. This is the twelfth successive annual surplus. Council needs to continue to achieve operational surpluses to ensure sufficient cash is available to fund future capital works like replacement roads and other community assets. Our balance sheet continues to remain strong with current assets exceeding liabilities by forty one million dollars and exceed total liabilities by thirty six. The sum of five hundred and sixty five thousand dollars was repaid to lending institutions during the year. We ask the council to consider and endorse this twenty 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 one annual report for the Swan Hill Rural City Council as presented.
Thank you, Lestrange. Any questions, please? There being no questions, can I have a move, please? Move councillor Bennett, seconded councillor King. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Bennett?
Just really quickly, the annual report's a lot to unpack, but it is a really important document. So thank you and thank you for your hard work, Lestrange, and your team for their hard work.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor King? Anybody wish to speak to the guest's motion? Do you wish to close, councillor Bennett?
No, no, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item B twenty one point nine four, instrument of appointment and authorisation. Mr Lestrange, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Many of the functions and powers of council staff stem from the appointment as an authorised officer. Kate Jewell has been, has joined the council, has been appointed as development manager and requires council approval to be an authorised officer in performance duties. The council CEO has the power to authorise various members of council staff under an instrument of delegation issued by council. However, advice members solicitors recommend that the appointment of planning officers as authorised officer by council under section one four seven four of the Planning and Environment Act nineteen eighty seven. As a result, council seek the approval, we seek the approval for Kate Jewell to be appointed as an authorised officer.
Okay, questions, councillors? Any more questions?
I'm leaving as the recommendation.
Seconded councillor King. Do you wish to speak to the, uh?
Proceed, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Are the next two items regarding S five and S six, issues of delegation, I'd like to deal with those in block. Item B twenty one point nine five, delegation to the chief executive officer. And item B twenty one point nine six, S six, issue of delegation to members of council and staff. Of you, Mr Lestrange.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Section eleven of the Local Government Act enables council to delegate to the chief executive officer. Maddox, our advisers in this matter, in our task letter, recommend that the council should refresh their chief executive officer delegations on a regular basis. It basically, Maddox will advise us of changes in current legislative frameworks and where we might need to look at the change of delegations. This one will obviously ask the council exercise the powers to confer by section eleven onto the chief executive officer as attached and delegate the person holding the position of chief executive officer or acting chief executive officer, the powers and functions they set out in the instruments. Section S six allows the chief executive officer through council to appoint the powers of delegations on to suitably skilled staff for the execution of a number of the operational target areas. Again, this is based on Maddox's advice on changes in legislation.
Okay, questions, councillors? Are there any in S five, S six, issues of delegation? Just, just, you've put these up in block, but the recommendations are slightly different. While we're going to deal with that, we'll do a recommendation for each S five and S six issue. So you're not putting them up in block? Well, you're doing the recommendations separately. You're not going up in block? Well, they are, councillor McPhee, and we'll take them as recommendations as each instrument. Have a move, please. Do you wish to move councillor Young, seconded councillor Bennett? Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Young?
Excuse me, Mr Mayor. What is the motion that we're moving?
The motion, the motion that we are moving is that we adopt the recommendations of both twenty one point nine five and twenty one point six.
So what's the, as I say, what's the motion? There's several motions in both of them. Okay.
As presented.
As presented here, as the recommendations.
Yes, that'll be one, two, three, four.
Yes.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Do you have any more, do you wish to speak to the, move, move, any debate, any against the motion? Right, we'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Section C, decisions which need action and notification. Item C twenty one point one seven, council assemblies, record of attendance, agenda wise. Mr Lestrange, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The following report provides detailed old council assemblies on a monthly basis. We ask that you note this report.
Thank you. Item C twenty one point one eight. Can I have a move, please, that these, these ones we noted? Yes, councillor McKay, seconded. Councillor King, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No.
No, all those in favour, asked unanimously. Item C twenty one point one eight, signing seal report.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. During the course of council business, we are required to use the official seal of the council. This is to inform council of the times that the seal has been used. There have been two agreements the seal was used on since the last.
Mr Mayor, are we used by, um? We've run on the assemblies or what do we run on? With action, I have a petition. We've got an assemblies report.
I've got a missed one.
We just did that.
Did we just do that?
We just did that, yes.
Okay, so during the month, the council seal is used two times, one on a loan agreement and one on a deed of renewal of lease. We ask that council notes the actions of signing and sealing the documents under delegation as scheduled.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Any further questions? Any further recommendations, please? Second, section D, notices of motion. You do not have any? Section E, foreshadowed items. Any foreshadowed items? Or no foreshadowed items? Section F, urgent items not included in the agenda, are there any urgent items? There are no, there are no urgent items. Section G, to consider and order on council reports. Who's coming first today? Councillor Benham?
I'll go first, seeing I've submitted my digitally, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Given restrictions and COVID outbreaks, I've had a pretty busy month, probably because of in some cases, I've caught up with the Youth Thinking Empower group with council up in Robben Vale, so just, they just wanted to keep me in the loop with what's going on and Will and Ash do a stellar job up there. They're also presented with a few challenges, as we all are, but they're doing a great job. We're meeting the first Monday of every month, of course, and Christmas festival planning as well underway and looking very exciting. I caught up with state MP Ali Kappa, who looks after the north of our municipality and just to chat about what she can do for us on a state level and planning was top of the list as per normal. Went and had a look at Lamontina's shed slash factory slash new pistachio plantation, just because the amount of activity that goes on at Wayman is incredible. The Fairfax Youth Festival storytellers online event was brilliant, some young storytellers that got to perform digitally from the comfort of their own home and it's not the same as being on a stage, but it was, they made a great evening of it. And the Maribor, I spelt that wrong, but the Maribor Pina Land meeting discussed the COVID nineteen response for local community in isolation and some positive cases that were identified in Robben Vale, working with MVAC and RDHS as well as council and director Myers sitting over there, working very, very hard to look after community up there. So that was a great meeting as well and that's it.
Thank you, councillor Benham. Councillor Young?
I've done a venue to venue, choose the Orange Centre Progress Association and last night I sent a report cost to living again.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor McKay?
I had a meeting with Rob Law from the Central Victorian Greenhouse Alliance, attended the Nia District Action Group Annual General Meeting. Had a meeting with community this week in Nia Venifera Forest, where we're seeing some lovely flows into the flood plain, likewise between here and Robben Vale. And attended the Jill Patton Memorial Event at Riverside Park, which I just would like to say was an absolutely fantastic celebration of Jill's life. Jill, some leaders are elected, some are in positions, well-paid positions as managers and others are just born leaders of our community and Jill was certainly one of those who performed such an incredible role in this region and it was a real honour to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right, councillor King?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Myself had a meeting with Zach Oates, who's one of the five federal officers who are overseeing sections of the MDBA, where the MDBA used to sort of correct their own homework. That made for a very interesting talk there. Banbury Bend Progress, Mayor Murray River Group of Councillors in Achuka, MDBA webinar on how is water allocated, a very interesting webinar that's available on the MDBA website if anybody wants to, for, um, get an idea of how that all happens. Playing on community group was addressed by local representatives of Lower Murray Water, which was good, we talked about sewerage and how that might happen up there. And on the fifteenth to the tenth, MRGC meeting again in Achuka, where we spoke to Helen Vaughan, who's the deputy secretary for water within dwell in terms of water sustain, deliverability and quality and a number of other issues that directly affect our, our water cultural production and our tourism industries. That's about all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, in-camera items, their owner, so this is, as we conclude this meeting at three PM.